It's on my list.
All right, welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen for January eighteen twenty twenty-three. It is six oh one. Do you take any comments?
Just a quick question. I'm here for the June Gallagher item on the agenda. Is there going to be an opportunity to speak at that version or should I?
We'll give you a talk to where you speak, but we're not planning to make any decisions for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Does everybody get a chance to speak?
Yes.
Make sure. You gotta make sure.
No, that's fine. All right, anybody up? All right, moving on to the town reports.
Hi, everybody. So, the administrator report was fairly brief, but that's happened with what we had in last week. But two bigger things to mention and then I have a couple other things to ask what. The storm damage update from the December twenty-third. Storm FEMA was out here on Friday. There was a number of individuals that came. Beau and myself, Mark started with us and then Bob joined with us later when Mark left. We walked with FEMA through all of the locations that have received damage on the island. Specifically going to South Shore Drive and East Shore Drive where the town recognized that significant damage was done in addition to different road access or beach access that needed some work. And they took photos, asked questions, assessed. They did ask me to provide some additional information to them. Some of, we had, we had an extensive number of photos. We had only sent them one or two of each location, so they were looking for additional pictures of that. The one major thing that they're looking for that Cass, Cass, Kathy kind of started working on last week was they needed to know with East Shore Drive and South Shore Drive, where the roads, whether the part on the other side of the road, the beach side, whether any of that was privately owned or publicly or owned by the town. Because unfortunately with this particular coverage, it has to be town property. And so we have gathered a lot of that information. We don't have the information completely finalized. When we do, we will send that information to them, to them. And then at this point, we're just going to wait to see if there's any additional information that they expect from us. And then in speaking with one of the women, she said that this process will now take up to a couple of months for all the determinations to happen. So, um, that's kind of where that stands. Are there any questions?
Carol.
Yeah, so when I talked to them originally, they made a distinction between repairs and mitigation. And so there's apparently another fund to like do things like shore it up or to do. So, is this process both or is this just repairs?
Yes, both.
It is both.
The gentleman, you know, the, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but he came out and all he did was do.
Yeah. They had, they had, so they had four different people from FEMA. One person was, their task was to, you know, protect the shore. The other person was their focus on mitigation. The other person was communication. And so they each had their own thing that they were looking for when we were doing these walks. And he did speak to us about, you know, with, with how, with some of these things, they can guide us into, you know, working on mitigation versus. So, but with those discussions, they said, as, as they collect the information and they determine based on their findings, what, what needs to be done, they will help the town guide with the appropriate direction.
And do we have to provide them with any more cost or engineering information?
Didn't ask, did I?
Right now, we don't. But what was made very clear to us is to keep detailed record of anything that is done now. And then let's say, if, you know, if the town decides to proceed with hiring somebody to assess South Shore Drive, in the meantime to, you know, keep track of that and all that information will be provided to them in the future.
There's one.
The next thing is the audit. Last Thursday, I believe it was, I've received a draft of the audit. And there were several things that they had highlighted that they needed me to go in and provide to them. I have had very little time to actually do that, but the goal is to provide that information to them. Once they get that information, they will finalize it and then hopefully we'll have the fiscal year twenty-one audit complete. And then we'll start focusing more heavily on fiscal year twenty-two after that.
All right.
You probably don't have a. And on whether the cost was going to be with budgeted eighteen thousand dollars, I believe. Do you have any idea yet?
They'll go up. I don't have the number yet, and that's something that they know I'm waiting on, which is why I didn't change the number because I didn't want to just throw something in, but I do anticipate that, that it will go up. They were flexible with us about what we had specifically budgeted for the previous year, so they accommodated us. But I think that it will go up for the next budget year. And I think that in that, we'll have the school pay for some of the town pay for some because they split their bill to see how much they charge for one versus.
And very quickly, if I may. I know that Maury had a lot of experience as a former, at least part of an auditor. Is she going to be able to pass any of that knowledge down to you in your opinion to help you prepare moving forward?
For the audit?
Yeah.
So, I utilized her quite a bit with the fiscal year twenty-one. And I've taken extensive notes, but a lot of the information that they've asked me have been basically reports that I would generate from Trio or, you know, cash receiving receipts and things like that. So, she has, she had helped do end of year things. And so we've tried our best to learn as much. I think she provided a lot more than a typical town administrator or town manager would to an auditor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm, so just so I understand, just, you know, on board only this year, there wasn't an audit last year. This is nothing in the budget line, right? So, the pre, so twenty twenty-one, which would have been the audit for twenty twenty, was done for eight thousand. And then this past year, twenty, fiscal year twenty-two, we didn't have an audit. That's the one we're doing right now.
We're doing fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Right, which would have been budgeted in twenty twenty-two. So, are we doing two audits in this fiscal year or one?
We're going to be doing one. The way that we were paying, the way that we had paid them and who will pay them will be based on the years that we budgeted.
Are we, but I guess maybe I'm confused.
I thought we were doing twenty-one, year and twenty-two.
That's what I thought.
I thought they were.
Good. So, they are doing them, but how we're paying for them is coming out of different budget. Is that what they're asking for?
I didn't know that. So, we're paying, so we're paying for fiscal year twenty-one in this budget year. And then we're going to pay for fiscal year twenty-two in.
No, we already paid for, for fiscal year twenty-one. We had all, they had, when we first signed the contract with them and started the process, they billed us. So, we paid for it out of a previous year. And so then when we got into the current year, we will do a journal entry to pay out of fiscal year twenty two budget year for that one. And yeah, so we're not going to have two years and, you know, thirty thousand dollars to pay in one year.
Right, so fiscal, so even, even though right now what I see is zero under fiscal year twenty-two, there's actually a number that's going to show up there eventually under audit, right? So, so in the budget you just gave us, under five fifty-ten, there's a zero there right now for twenty twenty-two, which was last year. Right? It's not a big deal. I just wanted to understand because I thought we were doing two audits this year, right?
Well, we can get some.
Yeah. Let's, let me, when we get into the budget conversation, I'll pull out my notes because now I, I wasn't prepared to answer that question.
Okay.
So, I'd have to take a look.
If anyone has any question, I would.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
You have a question? Yes?
So, a couple more things. So, one is, was a communication that I received from Maine Municipal Association, the Maine Town and City booklets that you, a lot of you recently received. The way that they're printing them is changing. So, now the town pays eight dollars per each selectman to receive those. And what they're doing is they're going to either a paper copy or electronic or both. And so what I would like to know, whether you all want to continue to receive those in paper form or whether some of you prefer to receive those electronically. So then that way I can let them know so then we can cut back on most of the cost or keep it the same.
So, if it's electronically, there's no cost?
If it's electronic, there'll be no cost. And then the thing to do is you can receive a notice that the magazine is posted on MMA's website and then you can go and look at it versus having it sent, send it to you, so.
Talking about the town's.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't need it.
Lithona?
Yeah.
Lithona?
All right, so if you want a electronic, raise your hand.
Oh, well.
All of you? All right, then. Tina? Okay, so that's done. And the last thing that I have that's going to be under the TA report is, so this is, is still very fluent and I am still trying to get some information about it. But Cumberland County has been awarded one point three million dollars that is available for home heating aid. And what Cumberland County is doing is on a municipal level, if the municipality signs up to participate, the town can receive up to fifty thousand dollars. And the town can then, based on people being able to qualify, can distribute funds for people for heating assistance. It doesn't have to be just oil or it could be, you know, the cost of wood pellets, whatever. I have reached out to Cumberland County to provide some more general information. The deadline for this is February first for the towns to decide whether they want to participate or not. It's not something that the town has to do, but if they want to, they can. So, I'm trying to figure out whether, what kind of requirement it is on the town base in terms of how much we have to gather. Because if it's something similar to a general assistance, those take a lot of time and they're really time consuming. They did provide you with a sample application that seems very straightforward, but this seems like it's a little bit easier. And so, like I said, I still don't have all that information, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because I do think that this is something that the town should participate in. And we should find, find a way to, you know, if there are people in the community that need that assistance, that we can apply for it. I don't even know if I need a motion from the selectman. Like I said, it's, I don't know all those eight answers yet. So, I'm wondering if you would like to make a motion to allow to go into this agreement in case of between now and February first that things come through and we can figure that out or not.
Well, I don't think we have to be before.
I know, I know, that's.
Carol.
I'd like to make a motion to, you know, have PICA pursue the heating units for Cumberland County.
Keeping Cumberland County warm for them. And I'll follow up with any information from the next, the next meeting, yeah.
Need your application. Any comments on this? Any comments from the public? All right, all day.
I think that's it.
Any questions for the comments here? Moving on to the rest of the business. Twenty-three to date, here, here, before they hear nothing on the value of appeal, if they need necessary action. So, we got a lot of information on this one and also all the one. Want to start?
Yeah, I can. So, what we put in the packet, the memo from Natalie Burns that she provided in December, this was shortly after Board of Adjustment Appeals issued their decision, providing kind of some of the possibilities. So, now the the appeal period when Mr. Fowler could have appealed with the court has passed. And so now it comes back to the Board of Selectmen to make a decision. And so there are a number of different things that the board can do, but the three basic things where you can kind of stem from is do nothing, come up with, you know, like decide to completely shut them down or issue a no violation ordinance or no violation notice or request that the, the the boat enforcement officer issue no well, not violation notice to the property owner and then work with the selectman to determine what it is that he's in violation on. So, he has a clear path in knowing what it is he has to clean up and if he doesn't. And then the other option is to do, go into a consent agreement.
End of the end.
So, we would make a request to the Code of Police Officer to consider or to make a consideration of a notice of violation. We would make that request with the Code of.
That is, yeah, to, according to the legal recommendation, that's what would be the next step.
Just to go ahead. Couple of things. Where actually things are. Pea. I think that's over there.
Sorry.
Nothing has been received by the Department of Public Health. That option to follow. Followers. I guess they, they don't think consent agreement is probably in the best interest of adhering to our zoning ordinances. It's a great message. The community that has a consent agreement, understanding that part of the findings from the Board of Adjustment Appeals was that we do not have an option contractor storage or in an island residential zone. Doing nothing about it is not a good option and I'm just running this down, blocking it out. I'm not sure we have too many options other than to make a request of the Code of Police Officer to sort of issuing a notice of violation.
You have a thought?
I'm commotion to with the word be direct. See, the only reason I ask this question on that is I'm not sure where the authority stops and ends sometimes between Board, the Select Board and then Code of Police Officer. So, would it be to make a motion to direct the Code of Police Officer to consider issuing a notice of violation to the public?
So, in this particular case, I think whether you say direct or recommend, the decision is now in the selectman's hands. I think that's the difference.
Recommend is the word, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of the Select, the Contra-Dex Select Board recommend that the Code Enforcement Officer issue a, but notice of violation to James Fowler of North Road Property, blah, blah, blah. I'm sorry, I have to. Those are lots of numbers we demand in your opinion.
Yeah. So, wherever the town will find.
Yeah. Second. All right, any discussion? All right, any discussion from public?
As a citizen, I have a couple of questions. So, his violation was what, storing, besides cutting the wood himself, he's stopped doing. He's now storing his equipment on his own property?
Correct.
But it's outside of the island business zone?
Correct.
That's not.
I don't think so.
It's not allowed. The way he's using the property is not allowed in the business zone nor in the residential.
How, you know, how he's using it?
Absolutely.
No, I'm asking, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think it was in there.
Is he just storing it for property or like forming a deal without going to the jail? This is all.
So, my, my suggestion in this matter would be to reference to the Board of Adjustment Appeals and the decision that they made for what exactly they found was not being, or was done improperly on property.
Yeah, I thought it had to do with the wood chopping. Yeah, I read through. My question is, is there any other similarities? Right, if you're a person who stores your equipment and then goes out and uses it elsewhere to make money, but you're not in the island business zone.
The question you're asking is been addressed in the Board of Appeals meeting. It's a legal question. I don't feel that we should be trying to answer those questions in this meeting. If you have a specific comment, that'd be great.
I, I would just ask the board to take a big picture, look at this and make sure that whatever precedent you set here, the unintended consequence could be that it then has to apply to people, everybody outside of the business zone who operates a business using machinery that they park on their own property or lobster traps or boats or any other stuff.
I understand what you're saying.
The board to consider. What kind of thing? I don't have a distinct dog in this fight, but I do expect and hope that people will look at the bigger picture. Thank you.
Making, yeah, I have a comment too on this. Yeah. I'm, I'm very concerned. I'm doing a shame, as a citizen, to actually figure that, you know, maybe this is personal, but Jim Fowler's done some good pre-work on the island, to my knowledge. He's a fair and honest man and does good work. Caitlin's trimmed up the hedge and has done. Then I mean, then we'll eat ya. We'll lose good people who do good services for us because, oh, there's an issue here. You know, the people in the cemetery or whatever, whatever the issue is. But I'm concerned that we don't have that larger picture about what kind of community we want to foster and what kind of businesses people would like to support on the island. I, I worry that, you know, yes, the lander will go away, leave our island, we are watching. But it's good for the island to have people like Jim and Caitlin, at least from my perspective, just voicing my opinion. I think maybe revisiting to allow, you know, some business activities in order and what was set, I don't know how many years ago, might be something to revisit. That's all suggestions. And there are many other businesses, the stores, the art shops, the other things that are fairly known on business. District, and are we going to open the floodgates because they're shutting everybody out, closing everybody out? I mean, maybe, maybe that's the right thing to do. Maybe the homeowners association is who. I, I, I think we need to be fair to the island community and the way it's been and the way I hope it continues.
All right, thank you. Anybody up? All right.
I do, but what you both said, and I thank you for your comments and I, I, I understand what you're saying. And I have thought about this and I have, without speaking specifically to the Code Officer about Jim Fowler and the Dowie complaint and appeal of the lack of attention to the complaint, I guess is a good term for the appeal. And it may have some unintended consequences if this goes forward, if the notice of violation is issued. The, the, the motion that I made as a board may or may not support is to recommend a notice of violation. Will the Code of Police Officer follow through with that? He probably will, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Will it affect other business people such as myself and other people that work, you know, on the island and carry things back and forth? I don't know. Yeah, that it could. Maybe it should, maybe it shouldn't. I think bigger picture for this island might be, without being disrespectful to any of the complaints or appeals that are out there now, might be to take a harder look at what we've carried over here for ordinances from the town of Cumberland and how our zoning is actually applied today. Does it need any recommendations from the Planning Board to the voter to consider for adjustment of land use? I don't know. Will the people have a palette for it? I don't know. Some people don't mind, some, you know, is some other people really don't want too many businesses around. So, I hear what you're saying. This has been a difficult situation for, for the Board of Appeals, I know. It's a difficult situation for this board. But that's the business we signed up for. I know that I am not personally trying to go after or favor any individual homeowner or business owner in this town. And I've had conversations with homeowners, so I just wanted to explain this, so thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I've done a ton of work with Jim as well, both professionally and personally. A great guy. Caitlin cuts a bunch of yards for our family and all. And I hear exactly what you're saying. I also, as a former member and later Chair of the Planning Board, have dug way deep into the ins and outs of the situation. And not here, but I'd be happy to chat with either one of you over a cup of coffee or on the phone to further explore what those differences are and what the options are to remediate on a longer term basis, as Mark referred to. We do have options and we should explore them. We have evolved as a community and we want to be a fair, we want to be a fair community to everybody who owns property and everybody who has an honest. and everybody who has an honest day of work out here and all that lies in between. And also, we have ordinances that we need to live to and, yeah, so if you want to chat, let me know. I'll be happy to give you a call or take a call.
Any other comments?
Alright, I need to speak here. Forgive me if I offend anyone. But our intent here was not to cause a big stink. Initially, it started with a simple, hey, what's going on here? This doesn't seem right. And here we are, almost five years later. I feel it could have been avoided. However, I wanted to stand up for what I believe in and that is the sign. I, it's not just about the body, like looking at a pile of crap when I drive home every day. It's about the bigger picture. And when I built my house, I was, I think, three feet too close to a setback. And I had a stop order put on my house because that was a block in fourteen acres. And I had to buy land and it cost me a ton of money. And eventually I worked it out. And then here we are, ten years later, and same piece of property is doing whatever they want. I also, before that, backing up a little bit, first thing I wanted to do when I bought the land was build a shed. And I was not allowed to. Why? Because it's in the ordinance. You don't have a secondary structure before a primary structure. So my new neighbor came along and built a shed. And that shed is still there. So this is just escalating out of control. I'm not trying to cause any stink. You know, I'm trying to actually set a precedent. He brings up a good point. If we have the ordinance, we should stick up for it. We should follow it or we should throw it out. You know, there was an email circulating that claimed, you know, I was backing down after the Board of Appeals meeting and actually what happened was I went to Jim Fowler because I felt the meeting got a little nasty. I tried to be a gentleman and I spoke to him and said, I mean no disrespect, I'm just trying to do the right thing here and stick up for what I believe in. And that turned into, I'm backing down. You know, you're changing the fabric of the island and this whole thing is about the fabric of the island. I moved here to be the fabric of the island. And this whole process, I feel like we've just been ignored. So I don't care what happens now. The code enforcement officer is probably not going to do anything. I think it says in the ordinance that selectmen cannot tell him what to do, so this recommendation is likely going nowhere. I guess that's all I have to say. Standing up for what I believe in.
Can I just comment to that? So you're right, the selectmen cannot tell the code enforcement officer whether to or not to do. The big difference here is Board of Adjustment Appeals made a decision and now it is in the hands of the selectmen. It's up to the selectmen to decide what the next steps are. So the next step is if, if they're recommended to issue a notice of violation, he will issue a notice of violation and then it is up to the property owner to do within whatever the guideline is of that notice of violation. It's set time to clean up or do this for them to, to do that. If they don't, then court or whatever the next steps are. So this case is slightly different because it is now at the discretion of the selectmen to move forward with making a decision, so.
I, I, I understand that and, you know, you know, enforcing the ordinance, I don't understand why that just can't be, why can't we just enforce it? You know, I listened to this board give an island resident, send them to collections for parking tickets on an empty snowboarder. And, you know, that's a precedent right there. You know, so I just, I understand you guys are in a tough spot and I'm sorry I put you in a tough spot, but I hope you understand where we're coming from. It's not malice here. We're just trying to live here. Right? Eric?
So to the point you just made, Vika, my question is, in order to accomplish something productive here, is it, is another alternative to enter in a consent agreement where we specify in detail what's allowed and what's not allowed? So the, if there's a consent agreement, that's with the board and the property owner or with the code enforcement officer?
The consent agreement is with the property owner and the Board of Selectmen. So we have control over that if we issue a notice of violation, request that the code enforcement. So in the scenario, say we, if we request that the code enforcement officer issues a notice of violation and that doesn't occur, we have any, can we then go on to issue a consent order? Depending whatever we want to do, yes.
So I think that we can follow that up with a consent order. So all those, it's not all or nothing.
May I suggest a friendly amendment or amendments to Mark's motion? I'd like to put a timeline on it.
Just speak up a little.
I'd like to put a timeline on that request.
On the recommendation to issue a notice of violation?
Yes, that's fine.
Competition's got to be two weeks.
It has to be posted within two weeks.
Your second to that amendment?
Right for a specification.
Yeah.
Sorry, so he makes an amendment, someone has to second it.
And the date would be February first.
So have the, no violation of the reply, January first?
Yes.
You still didn't agree. Yeah, it's like a separate amendment. Alright, all favor?
Of the amendment or the vote? What are we voting on? Vote on the first vote. People vote on the motion. Right, so go on the original first and then.
Alright, all favor the original motion? Any discussion about the amendment? Alright, all favor? Moving on, please do that. Here are five, here are an update on the Gallagher group, they didn't necessarily have. So also here we have a lot of information on, but also got a lot of information on yesterday, so. Did you copy any other?
So, yeah, I'll do my best. I'm not a lawyer, so bear with me. I'm trying to understand it as much as the next person. Right now with this particular case, there's really three things that are happening simultaneously. So the first one is, I believe it's in reference to the stop work order. The Drew and Gallagher's attorney has requested twice to have the code enforcement officer issue a stop work order. Last week in his monthly report, he said that at this point he was not going to be issuing a stop work orders. The, the big difference with this one is that there are still ongoing cases. And so I did reach out to the town attorney to provide some language and recommendation about who has the authority to issue a stop work order, whether the selectmen can make a recommendation if they disagree or where does that stand. I forwarded you that email. I heard back from her this afternoon. And her legal opinion is similar to what Jim Butler had said in the past was because of ongoing multiple cases in reference to this, that her recommendation right now is to, on the town level, not issue that and wait to see how everything else plays out because the stop work order is specifically to the shoreline zoning appeal or the shoreline zoning decision and that's her recommendation. And so the, the town legal appears to support the code enforcement officer's decision in not issuing that. And so after this notice last week, there was communication from the Gallagher and Drew attorney suggesting that the stop work order be issued. Then there was communication from Mr. McKee's attorney saying why it shouldn't be issued. So that's one part of it. Are there any questions about that?
So the, the stop order, that isn't, is that the same situation as the, the Dowie one?
No, nope.
My understanding is the code officer is so responsible for it.
This is correct and the town attorney has backed up that, that he is the one. The difference here is that nothing has been put in the selectmen's hand, you know, to make any decisions. And so the attorney and the code enforcement officer are both in agreeance based on what the email said today that at this point that, you know, she supports his decision to stand back and let the courts decide and if something comes back to the town, you know, then make those decisions going forward.
Yeah, I do apologize. There's a lot of emails and communication that, that we received and some of it was today as far as from Carol and I do apologize, you know, for not.
I would like to keep our policy of not taking action on stuff that comes in at the very last minute. At some point, we may want to define what last minute is. And are you, do you have more to talk about, the McKee decision we're talking about?
So I have, so there's three different things and I just wanted to take it one by one, so. And I, I, I agree with you and that's been the really most difficult part is when with something like this and because it's so fluent, it's hard to know, you know, when is, when can you share certain information, when can't you? So it's definitely.
And then you had requested that as a lawyer, so we just heard a little bit about it. I probably would have kind of heard it.
Yeah, and I, you know, last week when the Gallagher and Drew's attorney asked for the, you know, for their letter to be presented and discussed at that meeting, at that point, I didn't feel comfortable because it was last minute, so I thought that we owed that to, you know, to have that discussion. So the, the next thing was, once again, but in the same time, I mean, the town attorney forwarded documents to myself and then I forwarded them to the selectmen in terms of to remand the no shoreline portion of the appeal to the board for reconsideration. And so that's another part of information that was sent to you. The town attorney said that at this point there was no action for the board to take. That was one. And then we do have additional information that has come in within the last like two days, which I'm happy to provide that information or, I mean, it's, what it really comes down to is at this point there are multiple things that are going on in the court. The town attorney has not provided any suggestions that there is anything for the selectmen to do or be able to do, but I can see why people are very eager to find out some information. There was one thing that she is asking for, for the selectmen to kind of provide guidance on that I think is important to, to start, so.
So, and that's my question. I remember in one of her emails she needed us to give her guidance. Is that something we're going to do tonight for?
So, yeah, so I, I did, was able to touch base with her briefly today to see, you know, what it is that she needs from us and she said that some towns, it's very clear that if there's anything that's going through the court, that yes, the attorney to acknowledge it and to be the authorized individual on the behalf of the town. With us, it's, we don't have anything said and shown. Most of the time she just reaches out and says, you know, you open accept this or not? And so because of this case being so difficult, she wanted to make sure that the town was okay for her to be the authorized individual to accept the services. If the town is not, then they would have to send a sheriff out to the island to serve the town with papers and the costs that go hand in hand, the town would be charged for. So I think that, I mean, she, she is the town attorney, so I, I don't see a reason, even if for some, some reason or for any decision, if she's not represented in the town in the future, her acceptance has no impact on, on that. So I think that that's just.
Yeah, just a small point I would offer. I don't think we really have a town attorney. I think there's an attorney with whom we've been doing a lot of business and she provides valuable services and we pay her for it, but I think it'd be in our best interest to refer to her as her name as opposed to the town attorney. I think there'd be times when we use more than one attorney. That's a minority. Secondly, I'd like to ask for a motion that we authorize Natalie Barnes to accept legal communication relative to the McKee, McKee and Gallagher situation and forward it to us on a timely basis for our consideration. Yes, sorry.
Control costs. Are we going to go first and Eric and?
Nothing's changed from the last time we talked about this. Why, and this is something that I was going to discuss on the phone, is that we hold an executive session in the next meeting with the town attorney to go over some discussions and figure out the process going forward with budget.
I think it goes without saying that I'd like to just request that you over communicate with us, if nothing else, with this and any other team of officers, but make sure, over communication with us and make sure that we're well informed, this thing.
I forward you everything that I received today.
Thank you.
But do you have more to cover on this?
I, so there are a few other things, but they've been received within the last couple of days. And so I think that at this point, if the board is comfortable in the understanding or the opinion that maybe there is no decision and some of these things that could be made that I don't know if discussing the things that recently been received is necessary. Not that they're not necessary, it's just that they're.
This is all. My question. My question, Vika, would be to you. Has Jim Butler replied to Natalie's email regarding, of January 5th? Regarding the new application for his building permit?
I, and that's something I don't know. I have not spoken with him, which is why I'm putting it in the packet because I didn't feel comfortable talking about it, not having any information to, I don't know.
If he's replied to Natalie? Or if he has issued permit? We have advice from legal that's very specific. And as far as I know, he has not replied to that request.
I, I don't know the answer to that. As far as I know, no, but I also, I, I don't know. Like I said, I, I didn't have enough information about that to feel comfortable to put that in the packet because I didn't have the answers for some of those questions.
I'd like to make a motion.
But if you want to go with that motion and continue talking? If you would probably just ask if there's any questions related to this motion for Natalie. Yeah, I'm asking if there's more, more to this, to this motion.
I forgot we hadn't voted yet.
So is there any more comments on this motion about hiring a lawyer?
Can you just remind us what the motion was on? I can do part of it in a minute, please. We've authorized Natalie Burns to accept documents on behalf of the McKee Gallagher case and then forward it to us on a timely basis for our consideration.
This is just.
All right, is there any comments for that, this whole, for this motion? All right. On paper. All right, Ma.
I'd like to make a motion that the town administrator contact Mr. Butler regarding his reply to the direction from the attorney in her email on January 5th.
There's a.
Could you rephrase the motion? I would make a motion that we ask the town administrator to ask our code officer for his response to the attorney's email of January 5th.
He's just asking for his response. All right. Any comments? Or any comments on the topic?
Yes, so I think by what you're referencing is we reapplied for shoreline permit. I met with Jim Butler. He hasn't made an official decision one way or the other. So that hasn't been settled yet. He did share with me the current thoughts of the town attorney, which was simply, we met the criteria of the three things the board of appeals said we had to do or failed to do the first time. So we met those. But because of the extensive findings of fact from the board of appeals, our land has now been reclassified as resource protected by the board of appeals. And so that's why there hasn't been any decision. So honestly, you need to update the town should be zoning map. Because when you go in the office, the official zoning map is not wrong. And that's part of why we filed suit on Friday against the town should be for an ADB here. So the ADB hearing is the appeal of board appeals decision. Because they did not vote to reconsider, we were forced to go to the courts and we're going to proceed through the courts. And I'm sure that's going to be very expensive for everyone. Sorry, but that's just the course we have to follow when things go down this path. But no, and we haven't gotten a decision on the second shoreline permit, certainly light one. Because yes or no is going to determine next steps along the path.
Can I just ask a question? Did you submit an application to the town for the permit?
Yes. Wrote a check for the key, everything on the checklist. Yes. So when the decision was, you missed three things. To correct those three things and submit it again with an additional $250. Waiting for that decision. Okay? Anybody else want to comment?
Just because I submitted a draft of a petition to the town today that was, Vika, would you like to make sure it's correctly? Like that's, or whoever should be checking this in place where there's an official stamp. I understand it's three days. Maybe it was to gather enough signatures for the 10%. But my, my, my lot of concern here is that there has not been a good public that of, of the issues here. It's just today I heard from somebody who said, oh, well, of course they should make a tear down. He built it on land that was given to the town. And so, but that was what was happening. And I've heard other things about, look, he didn't get this or that. It's all underhanded. My understanding is that Mike from the beginning has sought to work with the town, state, whatever, to see appropriate permits to do the work that he's trying to do. And none of his things got to get around anything to the concern about the way to the beach. Cry to Mike being involved. For years, people said, what happened to the bass of the beach? It was gone. And Toby Webb ended up a cottage load where I, because I, effort to the store. And he asked that people all pitch in, you know, a lot of us, whatever, to get the bass restored. Later I asked him, he said, oh, Mike took care of it. He done his own, paid the complete rehabilitation for right away to the beach in honor of him. I'm sorry, it's just, I worry that the goal is to make a tear down of the house. And you all get sued for millions of dollars. That castle's over there, probably eleven, that building lot's not buildable. A house that was given permission to build, which now he has to tear down. And okay, thank you, the yellows get their boot in that. But we may have a $2 million castle that I'm not gonna pay. I don't know, I just feel like if it was not buildable, that should have been taught at the beginning. At the time of both permits applied for, that's the time to say, oh, this land is not buildable. Or it has issues or I can just, I worry that personal animosities, which I think exists here, that some personal involvement. The petition, they're asked that the secretary of claim was expressed personal animosity towards McKee's before, and a court actually stated that she shouldn't recuse herself. I know she got commission of, and not you guys. You know, I'm your boss, but should I be qualified to serve here? And everyone said, sure, you're, you're fine. But unfortunately, recusal is, is incumbent upon individuals to, to learn their power.
George, it's going a little, I'm sorry, going a little off topic. I'm trying to keep this convenient.
I apologize. I apologize. I thought it was a little common, the issues surrounding.
I understand. I don't want all of the issues surrounding there because we'll be here for days. So is that, is that all right? We're fine. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, members of the board. My name is Michael Smolnik. I'm an attorney with Archipelago here on behalf of Jeff and Norma Drew, as well as Ann and Jimmy Gallagher. First, they can't hear nicely. They actually asked me to read a letter that they drafted together. And I'm just going to start with that. Please accept this written statement from us, Red Fire Attorney Michael Smolnik, about the current project of 107 Cottage Road. Even though we can't, cannot attend this meeting in person due to other commitments and distance, we are fully engaged in this process. While we are technically from away, our commitment to Shabees community and breathtaking natural beauty is the reason we have pursued this matter. We'd like to take three short points for your consideration. Firstly, this is not personal. We have no bill of will towards homeowners. This is a question of fair and equitable application enforcement of the current ordinances on the books. We ask the select board to insist that the town's current ordinances be enforced. In this case, in the, in the case of this project, we believe that many technical requirements of the application were ignored and proper process were not followed, which result in violations of the town regulations. Secondly, we believe if the code enforcement officer had properly executed duties, both in terms of making the building permit application files available in prompt and complete manner and following proper procedures for shoreline development proposals, we would not be here today. Lastly, we ask the select board carefully consider how important the role of the CEO is to light on this island. More than any other municipal position, the CEO is responsible for creating a level playing field for all tax payers. We ask how the current CEO, now a full-time employee of Amazon in a demanding role, can adequately fulfill the role of code enforcement officer for Shabees on a part-time basis. We were calling, emailing, visiting town hall to obtain the project file. The CEO was starting his new job. We offered that Shabees growth plans require scrutiny, which can be timely, time consuming and complex. While the role may be part-time, it's hard to imagine that it can be done successfully with a demanding full-time job. To this last point, we found out only last Wednesday on January 11th that the homeowner had filed a new permit application on December 20th. Despite attempts from the attorney to get, from our attorney to get information from the CEO, he has not responded. While the town's attorney did, did respond to the request and sent whatever information the CEO had forwarded to her on January 4th, it is still not clear if that included all the information in the file and does not answer the question asked of the CEO. If any permits have been or are soon to be issued, will the 30-day deadline go by once again without any response from the CEO? It alarms us that the homeowner and CEO think this is only about paperwork. While filing the proper paperwork is a good first step, this is about compliance with the building ordinances that should be that are written to help protect the beauty of this island, recognizing that growth is not unlimited. In closing, some may say that we are costing the island money in terms of legal representation. We have spent significant personal funds and time on this project, time and money we would rather not spend. After much debate, we decided that someone needed to stand up and ask the town to enforce its current ordinances and to follow current processes. Otherwise, everyone will go along and go along to get along, which works fine for everyone that follows the same rules, but falls short when some decide these rules don't follow. That's not fair to the community, the environment, and to, and to one another. Thank you for your attention to this matter. That's what they had to say on this. All right, here, I think we're looking at the same thing. Right now, there wasn't appeal and the appeal was granted with the FAA. There's no permit in place at the moment. And therefore, there is a violation if work continues and where it is right now. As we sit today, there's a violation decided. CEO, the ordinance requires the CEO to issue a notice of violation. If there is a violation, it's not a recommendation, it's a requirement. We understand that you can't force the CEO to make this, to fulfill that stop work order. However, you can, just like you did in the appeal beforehand, request that that is done. And we do respectfully disagree that you can't do that this year. And we believe we really can. And while it's pending in the courts. Thank you. Can you read the section again where Gallaghers and Drews are asking for the application? The information in the application before it's determined one way or the other?
Yeah, absolutely. The whole paragraph?
Yeah, please. To this last point, we found out only last Wednesday on Jan- January 11th that the homeowner has filed a new permit application on December 20th. Despite attempts from our attorney to get information from the CEO, he has not responded. While the town's attorney did respond to the request and send whatever information the CEO had forwarded to her on January 4th, it is still not clear if it included all the information in the file and it does not answer the question asked of the CEO. If any permits have been or are soon to be issued, will the 30-day deadline go by once again without any response from the CEO? It alarms us that the homeowner and CEO think this is only about paperwork. While filing a proper paperwork is a good first step, is about compliance with the building ordinances should be that are written to help protect the beauty of the island, recognizing that growth is not unlimited. There was a request to, for the information that was filed with the town. That was never answered. But this is, yeah.
Any comments on the board? We got a motion on the table.
You have a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I guess I would just ask that you give us a copy of the word?
I can do that. I can also email it to you.
Or email it.
Definitely email it. Thank you. All right. Could you please read the report?
Yeah, it's that the town administrator contacted our code enforcement officer to find out if he has responded to the attorney's email of January 5th.
I think it's moved in a second.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, it's one more time, please, before.
Yeah. That the town administrator contacted our code enforcement officer to find out if he has responded to the attorney's email from January 5th.
All right. All right, Paul, Peter. All right, moving on. Is there any other discussion on this? Sorry. I just want to make a very quick comment about your point. And so recognizing the possibility of needing to recuse yourself. I think that's a good point. And for full disclosure, I am currently working for Jeff and Norman Drew on their property, which I believe Mike is well aware of. I want to assure everyone in this room and everyone who's listening, the Drews, Jeff and Norman Drew and I have never had a conversation about this pending situation with this legal challenge with the McKee property on Cottage Road, Norman. I think both parties are well aware of the inappropriateness of that. And if I, if this board needs to take action that isn't taken by either the code enforcement officer or the courts, I will certainly think about the need to possibly recuse myself at least. All right, I just want to comment to, about the refusing. I just wanted to talk to George about, we're going off on what we were talking about. If that petition comes forward to us and stuff, then that will get explored. And then you can voice your opinion on that.
I simply felt there was so much disinformation around this issue. It may be a public forum. Well, Mike and others expressed kind of contrary opinions and see if we can't resolve this at a larger forum. Because the island is in a bit of a conflict. Which we, what Toby Webb says, those in Big Island should be whatever, and those who think we should be heard should be.
All right, thank you. Are we all set at this? Moving on. 23-006, Budget Workshop, first draft of budget presented in capital expenditure. I will hand this off to Mark. Thank you, Bo. Thank you, Vika, for the first draft of this budget. Do you have any comments on it before I start talking?
The only thing I will say is that I, obviously first draft, what I did go through is really any information. any information that I have to date about increases. Um, I put that in. There's a lot that still come in as we go through this process. Um, but I focused on, you know, putting in our debt services, um, adjusting the, um, the insurances, the fight of the Medicare, things like that. So, um, in terms of the, the admin, that was the primary focus. With the budget ones, I have not met. I do have plans to meet with other departments. Uh, so those departments, I added what I could based on the information that I've received or anything that, uh, we have communicated, but obviously, those are very, um, rough, you know, first draft.
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, certainly Rachel Bogut, but I just want to ask, um, the other members of the present, if you have a preference on how far you want to dig into this tonight? You have a, what's the will of who you got in as far as how far we dig into the actual numbers tonight? Care about it?
I'm fine. I mean, it's always, so, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm fine spending some time on it. I guess part of what, I have a lot of questions about kind of maybe more the process and kind of if we have questions, how to get them answered, so we're not overburdening the staff. And also, for example, what you just said, if a department wants something that's out of the normal operating budget, is there a process that they request that, or a form they fill out, or how does that happen so that, you know, this? And, and I guess my biggest question right at the moment is, when does something become capitalized? Is there a financial threshold that you put it in capital?
We had a limited minimum threshold years ago of seventy-five hundred dollars, eight thousand dollars minimum for something to enter a capital purchase, which sounds like a small number to me. Um, but that's the number that we started with, seventy-five hundred, eight thousand.
So was that the number that Beavis was saying, or?
This was years ago, and I don't think we ever put it into yet.
This is the first time we're ever, because it seems like most towns have a number. I mean, and it makes sense, but it's a certain threshold where you want to put it into a long-term plan versus, uh, what, you know, an expense.
A one-time department program.
Right.
Well, my experience with capital spending is that's one of the criteria, but the other criteria have to be longevity. So there might be something that's a thirty thousand dollars item that's in the expense item. There might be something that's a seven thousand dollar item that's capital class. So I would, um, as part of developing a capital planning process, which we talked about doing, I would suggest we come up with some guidelines around at least those two factors. So just the dollar amount, but also longevity, the capital nature of the item, if you will.
Yeah.
Something like that.
And if I may, for a second, I don't think that the town ever got to the point where the departments and/or the town administrator actually filled out a physical form that said, the fire department needs another pump or truck by twenty-twenty-six. It's going to cost three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we recommend that you put away X amount for these many years, and then we practice it out, right? Or we would rather put some of that, reserve account on some of that and consider bonding both or whatever. I don't think we ever got to that point, that formality. What I've always asked for, and I know Herb was more strict than me when you were in the budget, was for the town administrator and possibly the department head to come to a meeting and, and and say, we, we've sat down, we've looked at our department, we've gone over the equipment, this is what we think our next piece of equipment is, this is the need, this is the rationale, this is the cost, and do you think we can get this this way? What do you guys think? It kind of worked like that.
But is that information somewhere? Like?
We got the priority list that you got impacted. You got one that we worked on one year.
So one of them that Beavis had, I don't want to, I, I mean, maybe I should wait till we get to the capital budget, but the, the question I have sort of how, what the process is, and then you had some sheets that had like sixteen and seventeen, it looked like you're out of the capital plan. Is that an actual capital plan?
Which sheet are you talking about?
What you sent us this week.
Yeah.
You had, I mean, you sent us several things that were sort of capital requests, kind of different forms. And so I just wasn't sure. Well, it was the other one, that. So this one that said page sixteen and seventeen?
Yeah, so this is something, this is something that I, when I came into this position, I talked to Marjorie a lot about what she did. I looked at what Justin had done. And then I kind of dug from her previous year's budget finders and looked at and looked, you know, and I, this is something that I had, um, found in a previous, uh, budget finder, could not find anywhere electronically. And I worked off of this in terms of, you know, the descriptions about.
So is this your reference for descriptions when you say, okay, but it sounds like?
It was, yes, it was legit somewhere at some point, and for all I know, I'm just not searching it the right way, but if this is, this is what I stumbled upon, it's a bit of a roll.
Okay.
I'd ask Marjorie. It's this, yes, it is.
Yeah, and I think we can just take this open here. I think we should try to agree. The only thing that I think sort of missing when you look at it, I would think the capital plans is what Mark just said, sort of the timeframe. Trying to save three years or anything. And, you know, what's the total? Not, there was another one you sent that actually sort of had that in there, where it had.
Yeah, and that's something that Justin had started breaking on, I think, for him to kind of figure out in the time that he was here.
Looking through what other towns have, a lot of them have these spreadsheets that basically, I mean, I think it's a standard format because they're all using similar formats. And I think, just to have, I think we can have a plan, Herb would be a master of the plan, but I think having a spreadsheet where we at least have it all populated, because I, it's a little hard to tell what the timeframe is and how much. Because that's what, as Mark said, that's what we make the decisions on, filling a lot of the money and, you know, a big chunk of the potential tax income there. And maybe sometimes we have to stop it away because if we don't, we're kind of borrowing from it. But it's, he's going to make that decision, so I know what you're saying.
And there very well could be that spreadsheet, you know, from a previous year. I mean, I I blocked it.
Yeah, well, and I think we can come up with a format. I just wanted to know if it was an actual plan. This is the best.
That's what I've been able to find to work off of.
Yep. And I would suggest instead of spending a lot of time trying to find it, let's just create one for this year.
Um, so I thought we were actually making a first cut at going through the budget in detail.
Sure.
Uh, that's what you want to do?
No.
Now that I know that we have to have all the updates in. So I went through line by line and made comments line by line, but if we don't have all the proposed changes in there, I don't think we should do that.
You talked about departmental.
Line item by line item, departmental by something, yeah.
Right, and I've gone through them as well a few times. I'm sure Jen has and others. Um, I wasn't sure how much time we were going to have tonight, so I wasn't sure how, how, um, rest of the, we wanted to want to go at it. I know.
Let me finish. So, I, uh, I encourage all the zero increase lines, but I think I understand now that some of those zero increase lines will turn into increases.
And a lot of them probably won't.
Okay, all right. So that being the case, in terms of your question, what do we want to get done tonight? I would propose we not go through it in detail. But I have another question. I also, when I got to the school, uh, was confused. So it's just not loaded yet, right?
Um, so, yeah, with the school, um, it is a little confusing. Uh, so if you look at, I'll try to reference the page numbers for you, so then that way I can potentially sound like, or you can understand what I'm saying. Um, historically, so with the town, we have all the different departments, you know, administrator, public works, solid waste, and under that department, everything that goes into it. Um, with the school, the school was created as one department, and whether it was custodian, transportation superintendent, it was all plumped in under eight thousand. So if you look on page twenty-three through twenty-seven is how it has always looked at. And so what the school had done is they had, um, Marjorie used to do this. Um, is she would take the trio and she would put it, and Carolyn and I can speak to this, into an Excel document that they can then understand, wherein that Excel document, it was spread by, you know, superintendent, custodian and so forth, so it would be better, um, understood. Last year, um, when Justin was the town administrator, he told the superintendent that he just wasn't able to do that for her. You know, Marjorie was quick with those things, so it was very simple and easy for her to do. With, um, when I came in, I figured out what Marjorie had done, talked to her, and then, um, did it for Ann and then showed her and sent her the information so she could do that. She thought it was time consuming. So that trend trailed into the discussion of why we set up the school of departments, just like the town, so then it makes sense for everybody. So the school and the town is using the same type of information across the board and how it's visible. So I worked with the system, with the company this year, and I put in, um, starting on page, um, so the, the page twenty-three through twenty-five is what it used to look like. And the reason that I had to add it is because that's what shows the actuals over the last three years.
Right.
Starting on page, um, twenty-seven, um, you will see that it is now not showing the previous years because the system doesn't recognize that eight thousand and one office of the superintendent did exist, but in, in their eyes, it's a whole new department. And so for the reference of previous years, I put that information in so then you can reference. So if you're looking at eight thousand one, eighty-one, one, you would look back at eight thousand eighty-one or one to see the previous years. They don't have to be in there. They're not adjusting the numbers for the current year. They're just, it's in there, um, as a reference, where you could see previously, in previous years, what the number was expended.
But Trio does not have a way of loading that history manually?
No, no, oh, I've asked. It's just, it's the way it works. It's once you adopt those, I go in and I go into the current budget, start the budget, and whatever I put in is what's going to be in it. And so unfortunately, it's not, I can't go in and say manually, let me put in what the actuals were, because it's registering the previous years, what we, it's.
So one technical question. Can you export from Trio or the old department eight thousand into an Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
Can you export from Trio, from departments eight thousand one and beyond for the new, into an Excel spreadsheet?
Yes.
If we have those two Excel spreadsheets, it's pretty easy to match them. It'd be much easier to analyze the school budget if we had those instead of flipping back and forth for three pages.
So I understand what you're saying, and if I do that, and we're doing exactly what we, we have been doing previously. And so I've communicated with Jeff and Ann, and they're aware of this hiccup, not a hiccup, it's just it's the way the system is.
Let me finish. I'm offering to do it for you. And not to change anything in Trio, but just to combine those two spreadsheets for our benefit of looking at the school budget. If the school wants to use it fine, they don't want to fine. I just don't want to flip back and forth over and over and over again. So what would go into Trio, the official document, would just be the new layout that we have now for the forecasted year. But for our purposes of analyzing, we would have a spreadsheet that we could look at, the columns from the first five pages lined up with the columns from the second five pages in a logical order.
So they, they do have an Excel that they have done that, so in, and that's why Ian is anticipating to use that Excel this year to, for the same reason, to make it easier. So I would suggest that, you know, we would just continue using what, what the school has been historically using, because it's.
Oh, because we don't really look at the school budget until they're finished.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. That was going to be my question, too.
No. I, I don't want to look at anything before it's time. I won't look at everything as soon as we can, but I'm going to look at anything before it makes sense to look at.
Wow.
Forget I said anything.
Yeah, no. Jen, you and Carol have a lot of experience on the school side, and again, the school budget is going to be finalized much later than ours. That's accurate? Usually, usually.
Don't have.
Usually they're later than ours.
Yes. I'm married to a school community member, and I have no idea.
Because of the process they use.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so.
I want to say that we give them a date when you want, uh, China life numbers, and that's what they shoot for.
Okay.
And I know there is, there's, it's, to my knowledge from the notes that I have looked at, it's this, and I communicated, um, I wrote that I had emailed, uh, Jeff and Ann that in February, yeah. So a little bit earlier than in typical years for them to have, you know, a first round presented, so we can plug those numbers, and so it would be more.
So I have one more process. So I have an ongoing back here to the question. This is very selfish. Um, I've got to get it loading tonight, and I have to get out at five in the morning. So if we happen to finish by seven minutes till eight, I would walk out the door and get in my truck and leave. Um, if we are still going, I will stick around. Um, but I, I don't see a whole lot of point in going through it in detail, given where we are in terms of the data generation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make a couple of quick points specifically that I noticed, uh, just very quickly. So here we are on the eighteenth. The, the first real whack at the department is going to be coming Saturday, February eleventh, nine AM. That's when we're going to go right down to, you're going to have your departments all marked up. We're going to erase the talking to department, each select president, and he's going to have an opportunity to say, you know, I love this, why is this so much? I recommend this. I don't like the total, whatever you say. And if we have a majority consensus with your recommendations, then on recommendations move forward to the next draft. That's the process. Then go ahead.
But if he's not going to be here on the eleventh, did I get that right?
Yep.
Yes, unfortunately, Vic will not be here. I think what we asked you to consider was to have met with your department.
Yes.
Have some sort of, if, if any of the department, department heads want to speak to us, then we should know about that. And, uh, if, if, if you can, maybe a supporting little memo that says how you finish your discussion.
There is increases or there's specific needs, then.
Because if we have specific questions, it's going to be hard to ask someone who's not here, you know, and we may have specific questions that may not get the specific answer that day. I don't know how it will go.
Well, we have a meeting on the twenty-second. So will you, yeah. Get your hands to some of the questions, Ted?
Right, so the next meeting is an evening meeting, but it is a budget workshop. It's the second draft of budget in discussion. And I guess my question to all of us, including the town administrator, when we say second draft of budget in discussion, how far are we going to go with the department versus capital at night? Because capital is really where you can have some big discussions and big picket eyes if you want to.
Yeah, I guess that was a question I have. I think the capital, I mean, I think the departmental budgets, maybe we can get to the second cut after we get the questions answered, but one question I have, again, sort of a process because it's new to me. Do, you know, don't we need some of the, or I guess we, do we need to know if there's been, you know, some undesigned fund balance? What happens? In other words, you're doing the audit, the audits are being done right now. What happens? In other words, you're doing the audit. The audits are being done right now. So if, don't we need some of that information to kind of know where we stand?
With, um, so from the experience of doing it last year, what happened was because we didn't have the audit, um, and this is something that we seek Marjorie's help in, um, she, um, figure out based on our end of year, what the, um, what the undesigned fund balance would be, and then she went with a very conservative, um, recommendation, in terms of how much we could use, and that's how we moved forward. But that wasn't until later on, um, in the budget towards the end.
So when you say how much you could use, how much you could use to put into the capital, is that? Right. So it seems like keeping that at the later end so that we get the audit information would be better because you kind of want to know. Are we going to get the twenty-two audit?
Well, as long as it's taken us to do the twenty-one, I'm not confident that we'll have the twenty-two done before, um, the end of the, I mean, maybe, but the twenty-one took a long time and it was, you know, it's a company that was, it was their first year working with us, so there was just a lot more that they had to figure out and, uh, put in. So maybe twenty-two will go a little quicker, but I just, at this point, I don't know.
But it seems like the later we go with that, it's better to have as much of that information as we can for capital.
Right.
So historically, we've asked the taxpayers to consider allowing us to use, I'd say eighty, eighty to ninety thousand up to a hundred and fifty or seventy-five thousand to, um, either apply to some sort of a capital, uh, goal item or to help soften the increase in the budget as it relates to the number.
And that's what last year was, I, I believe it was between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand that was used to offset the total budget. Um, and then the school used, um, you know, um, a portion to offset the total budget and then they used a portion, like twenty-five, to put into one of their reserve accounts.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'll just speak from my perspective. I don't tend to budget carrying on. We can take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to soften the increase. I sort of look at, you know, how we think of doing with the department, uh, are we under budgeting? Are we over budgeting? Are they need operational? Then when you get to the capital, I think prioritization first of all is probably a good thing. And then if you have a goal with a plan or an action on an item, then that certainly should be applied. And certainly you should, um, consider, you know, the impact of not planning for a certain drop capitalized as opposed to planning for certain capitalized. That can have an effect not only now, but on future, uh, select boards and generations. It, it can be difficult. It could be philosophical. It could be passionate. We have dredging hanging out there. You have stone war, flooding for loom. It's all good and poor, which is.
What's that?
Many policies.
Yeah. We have our kind of good stuff looming. We have, you know, fire, department stuff, the town office stuff, and, and, and all this stuff is looked at differently by different people, but, um, to me, the capital is, is where the rubber meets the road and, um, go ahead.
So back to your original question about, uh, the second draft budget, my thoughts are we can do the work on the, the first, the, the, the Saturday. Work on the department budgets, and if we have questions for it, then they would be answered on the second draft budget and then we go jumping right into the capital after the question there.
Yeah, um, Chris, Chris, Chris should be here at our meeting on Sunday on the eleventh.
Not as, not homeboy, I don't know.
Okay. So if we don't have someone taking down what we come up with the concerns, then we're going to have to jot down what our concerning questions are, which may be by administrator.
So my hope is that you guys can, uh, do the YouTube so it can be recorded. And then as a backup, um, you'll record it on here and then I'm hoping that, you know, I can listen to the whole thing.
Send that all down and whatever the roads I can. Yeah, I can go from that. I can second.
All, all good.
Awesome. All good as it be.
And I, what I've done, you know, the last year when we did this, what I did is if you guys went through it and said, you know, all in favor, minus three thousand, I would just, you know, cross out that line and do minus three or plus five, and then I would take this, go re-enter it, and that's, you know, your next, uh, draft.
So the reason that I brought that up, for me personally, I'm not the best secretary in the state. I'm like the.
Okay.
In real time.
Yeah. Can I just say one thing that I noticed quickly on the operational budget department stuff is when we get the contribution, the commons was written down at three thousand dollars, and this is a very small number. But the reason it's at three thousand dollars is we missed the year payment. That probably should say fifteen.
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Yeah, right.
All right. I have one other big picture thing that would help me put a lot of this in the context. Maybe it's like way too big pictures, but it just occurred to me when I was reading through this. I would love to see a recap of, um, what our tax revenues were and what our budgets were, going all the way back.
I'm just putting that together.
Let's see, it's like.
Total taxes collected.
Tax payer.
Total taxes collected and total town budget, just the total.
Yeah, so I've been combining the historical budgets, tax rates. The mill rate is a little deceptive because then we get it evaluated, so I'm thinking what the actual numbers are.
What we brought in and what we spent each year since we became town. It'd be, if a taxpayer asking that question, I'd be embarrassed to say I don't know.
Right. And our assessment goes up and it's been going up really dramatically lately, so sort of have more money to spend all of this. But even if our mill rate isn't so high, the valuation's not.
And, and again, this is just me. I, I tend to not look at it that way. I tend to not plan on.
No, I'm saying, you know, if, if you don't, I mean, just because the mill rate's stable doesn't mean you're not spending more money.
I'm not naive enough to think the value of property probably longer stay the same go down. But I don't myself, I don't actually plan on having extra money.
No, but I think you need to recognize that if the mill rate's stable, but the valuation's not up, you couldn't, you know, spend any more money without necessarily be able to.
Well, yeah. That, um, in prior lives, in budgeting exercises, um, employing a range of different tools. I, I think it's a normal tendency for an organization to have a built-in bias that prices are going to, that, that budgets are going to go up. And if you happen to have the funding that allows that, if in our case because valuation's going up, um, it's easy to fall into that trap. You know, realize, oh my, I've spent five million dollars a year now. We used to spend one million dollar a year and inflation would have indicated one million seven hundred five. So how do we get, um, exactly?
Yeah. Herb was, was much stronger at some of this than, I don't know, but Marjorie was great along with some other town administrators that we've had. But in my opinion, when we first started this town, we over budgeted badly in some places. I think we tried to level it off and got a little better at it. I know that in my opinion, the, the, the spending has gone up probably two to three and a half percent per year and the, and the way that. Herb and I, Herb and I especially, I'm not saying other folks people like what I'm going to do, but Herb and I were very clear with ourselves and the public that we weren't holding spending and taxes. We were softening the blow of increases by taking balances of what they're doing to find out. I thought that was important to tell people, you know, we're not up here keeping taxes from going up. That spending is actually going up because sometimes expenses go up and sometimes you choose to spend. And, and, you know, so we were trying to be transparent that way. Whether people heard what we were saying in auto warrants, I don't know. But I think it's important to be transparent like that. We, we planned to help away a bunch of money for the stone war and the town office, I'm just giving you the example, and, uh, dredging or whatever it is. I think we should just say, I think we need to do that.
Right.
And some other things may need to be softened a little bit, make it so it doesn't go up, up, up. Anyway, I ran one a little bit. Where do you think we are right now tonight? Do you want to dig into this anymore today?
I don't know where we are as far as the department, so.
What I, what would be helpful for me is if you have specific questions, if you could email those to me so then I can help better prepare, you know, um, for whether that could help me with the discussions with the departments or, you know, the administrative. I mean, looking right now at the, the thirteen hundred administrative, um, once I get in information from the auditors about what kind of increase we'll see that might change, and then I think the technology might fluctuate a little bit here and there, but other than that, I don't anticipate that department changing. But then with others, so it would be helpful if you have this.
Just one second. Here's a famous question that we seem to figure about a tiny bit possibly. If I want to send the town administrator an email about a question about department tax, am I including everyone in that email?
So I looked at the way we did it last year and, um, each selectman would just send me their question. And so what I went through is I took, I printed them out and then I went through line by line. And if the next person had that duplicate question, I would just cross it off because the answer was already answered. And then, uh.
Yeah.
I would adjust those for the next budget printout. I would adjust those questions, you know, with that. And so if you saw that, you know, you knew you asked me specifically about, you know, mule, and on that next report, it was adjusted or didn't adjust it, you would, you know, burn it out if you felt like, so.
The two purposes of this question for me is I, I like to have everybody here what my recommendations and questions are and why. And the best place to do that is at the budget meeting. But if you wanted to record the budget meeting, did you mean that you dropped down the twelve aspect and then?
I would just print out all, I would, I printed out all the emails, but if you want to email me and CC everybody on it, that's fine.
That would be my problem because I think, so we don't keep asking the same question.
You have an immediate.
It's just, it's just that, yeah, it eliminates, you know.
Thing you can't do. My only thing is respond to that. You cannot respond.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can send an email to her and CC all of us, don't respond. But we can't comment or respond to it while one of us can't.
That's having a medium.
So, but you can do the same thing. You can send.
I mean, we can acknowledge it. I mean, we can't get into a discussion, but I think sort of having everybody on the email would minimize the duplicates, the, um.
And that's, yeah, and that's fine. I think it's just a prevention of having communications that discussion now. So, yeah, I mean, that's fine. You could do whatever way is easier, but that would be helpful for me.
So the only question I have is what kind of question, how would you like the question mode without having like a paragraph saying blah, 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 blah? Do you want line item, uh, thirty-one sixty miscellaneous expense? Why is it, uh, decreased by ninety-two percent? Why is that? Why are you projecting that?
Yeah, just, just identify the department, the number.
Yeah.
Identify the line item, basic question.
Yeah, why, why is technology being increased by thirty-six percent under effort? Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, that's totally fine because that'll, that'll really help me in prepare for the next one. Or have those questions for you with the next meeting.
Okay. And then, uh, Jan, you're kind of very good. You're doing good. Good to see you.
I'm, I'm really good.
Yeah, I'm trying to hurry this up. And then, so the capital, when we dig into the capital, that, that's going to get a little, um, beefier. So I think probably start thinking about for yourself what you would prioritize if it was your recommendation to this group and the people first of all. And then an amount that you might prioritize and a goal for that project to happen, which is a big, big thing to think about. But and then whether you think it's realistic to even save or whether we're going to have to talk realistically about bonding and which one. Thank you, Chris John.
All right. Selfishly, I would make the motion that we go into the session to discuss the applications that are in front of us for, uh, the, pursuant to MRK, say, whatever that means.
Yeah, and I would just.
Do you have a personal comment on, on those?
Well, it's just that I think that.
No, I'm asking specifically Bob because, uh, instead of going into a regular, uh, act.
Any thoughts on the.
Um, am I allowed to say what my thoughts are about this meeting?
I don't want you to say that. I won't ask if you guys.
I have a specific comment. Okay. Uh, so there is a motion.
Okay, second is communications. Okay, yeah.
I'm a little sorry.
We might, maybe we should jump to the solid box. That's fine.
There is a motion on the table. Second by Carol. All right. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
You could.
All right.